Sally, if you'd like to start with your opening statement.
Okay. I'm gonna read most of it so I don't forget anything. "In 2005, at the age of 62, I moved to Boyne City where my daughter lives at school in her place at Mark. I bought a little cottage up on Hill on Main Street. My son Josh and his family live a boat ride away in Charlevoix. And I love this town. I bring 40 years of legal and small government experience as my qualifications for a seat on the board of commissioners. Since entering the race, I've listened to your concerns and three issues keep popping up. The effect resort growth can have on the cost of living here, the need for affordable housing because of the increasing job opportunities for new business, and the need to keep Boyne City's history from getting lost in the shuffle as we grow. As I have learned, Boyne City was one of the best-kept secrets in northern Michigan, and now the secret's out. So, we've become a very popular destination for vacationers and the part-time residents who own a piece of this special place. My goal as a commissioner would be to strike a balance between accommodating development and maintaining the character and charm of our downtown. We have a vibrant and creative community spirit. My hope is to keep the spirit going while we continue growing and to serve all of you, from the oldest to the youngest. I would welcome the opportunity to give back to the community I love."
Andy.
That is a tough act. My name is Andrew Smith. I go by Andy, for those of you who may not know me. I'm a little bit younger. I had moved to Boyne City about three years ago. Been living here full-time for two years now. Spent some time in the Taski. I currently work at the Boyne Land Resort in the marketing department. And I started to hear about the need for some support, or more so, fresh thoughts when we started talking about housing. It is something that I feel is very important for the development of the community, which I have come to love. I've been coming up here for about 12 years now. And I went west, I went east, as far as Portland, Maine, as far as Portland, Oregon. And I've come to find that what we have here is something that is truly special, something that I feel I have been welcomed into very well by this wonderful community. And it's something that I hope to continue to help grow in sustainable ways. I appreciate you all taking the time to come out this evening, and thank you for being here. Hopefully, you can get to know us a little better.
Ron.
Good evening, and welcome, everyone. I've been on the commission for the last 18 years, and seeking to stay on the commission in order to keep the dream alive and have the background information and the, I would say, maybe the track record of what's happened in the 40-some years I've been in Boyne City. I was raised in Charlevoix on a dairy farm. In 1960, I escaped the farm, joined the United States Air Force for four years. And anyways, the... During the... While I was in the Air Force, I started going to college and earned degrees, a bachelor's degree in business, and also an MBA. Took three years longer for the MBA. And in 1972, we had the opportunity to buy the Sears catalog franchise for Boyne City, and we've owned and operated businesses, the Westronato and Computer Guys, in addition to that business for over, well, 40 years now. My background in business, I think, has brought a lot to the board. Built some good business models, with very good people, and the secret's out.
Thank you, Ron. Dean.
Thanks. I'm Dean Solomon, and I've been part of the Boyne City community since 2006. Moving up there was the best decision we ever made. It's that we just love this place. Anyhow, two of our children ended up graduating from Boyne City High School. I started already to start college by the time we moved up here. I just recently retired from MSU extension, the Boyne City office right here in town. In my professional role and as a volunteer, some of the things I really enjoy, most of the opportunities to help out here in Boyne City. So during that time, I served for 10 years as a member of the Boyne City Farmers Market Committee, two of those as the chair. Helped to facilitate that every other year, community goal-setting meeting that we have here in town, enjoyed that. Worked at the Chamber in Main Street on their annual goal-setting session every now and again. Led the Boyne City US 31 non-motorized trails during committee years ago, back when that was a fairly controversial topic here in the county. I've served on the Charlotte County Planning Commission for four years and a bunch of other stuff. You know, I'm not ready to hang it up and just go fishing. But I think I have a lot of experience and creative ideas and would really like the opportunity to continue to serve our community as a city commissioner member.
Thank you. Well, good evening, and thanks to all of you for coming. My name is Chad. And the question was, why do you want to run? I've lived in Boyne City almost 20 years now. And I met my beautiful wife, Sherry, here in Boyne City. Together, our four kids are the benefactors of a couple of schools here. And all that time, I used to always ask myself, or tell myself, or question myself about, why aren't you more involved? Why don't you do more to help out the community? It just seemed like there's always something that got in the way, whether it was work or even family. And so, I've always wanted to be involved. And the last, probably, six months, I started talking to some friends and asking about what I could do. And they were encouraging, and they said, why don't you just start doing some volunteer work? I've always done a little bit of volunteer, but it was always like a one-off, one-time here, one-time there. Never was terribly consistent. And then this opportunity came up, and so I thought, why don't I go ahead and take the lead and throw my hat in the ring? And so, those folks who were encouraging said, you should do it. This will be the first time I've done something like this, and so I'm looking forward to it. If elected in November, I'll work hard and do the best I can. So, I'm excited for the after.
All right. Andy? What made you run for city commission?
I was approached by a very reputable member of our community, and he said, you know, we're looking for people that really get involved. I said, wow, I have come to really love this community. I love where I am. I love what I would love to be able to operate with the community. I've said, well, a few times. I just think, you know, I offer a unique skill set that I would like to share with the community in driving us forward. Really helping the community grow in sustainable ways, and helping get more young people out in the community, and organically as well.
Thank you. Ron?
Why? Pretty much, well, I've been an advocate for seniors ever since I got to Boyne City, and I retired in 1998. People like Buzz Dolls and Ray Zabrowski and Mary Town, Yell Twist and my arm, and said, Ron, we need some help to see if we can get a senior center built. Five and a half years later, we raised about $900,000, and we have one of the best senior centers in northern Michigan, or in all of Michigan, I can say, too. Been to many of them. And I continue to be an advocate for seniors. Having my seat on the commission has helped in many ways, as far as the team we put together to fund senior services, not only for Boyne City, but for the county. And anyways, I've grown several hats in the last 18 years.
Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, well, I think I sort of loaded, I just can't let go of this idea of serving. And that really might be motivation for wanting to stay and evolve. The city's well-run, we've done a lot of great stuff, but we've got some challenges that I think we've really got to address from the bigger. Couple of folks mentioned housing, and housing choice is an issue, so there are challenges we have here. One of the things that is common in a community that has success is you start to rest on your successes. And we need to really just keep it going. We need to be moving ahead and using more creativity to keep ourselves as a winning team as we currently are now. We need to think about funding, how we're going to fund the inclusion to the projects that we have going on here in town, of course. And more ways to give residents, even more ways than we currently have, of giving residents a real voice and an active role in their community. I also think that we need to continue our efforts to protect, like, Charlevoix and the beautiful natural resources around us.
Thank you, Dean. Chad?
I spent just about 20 years in public education, first as a teacher for most of that time, and then as a principal. In that capacity, I was able to work with communities, the entities in which I worked, and mostly the parent community. About three years ago, I got a chance to kind of step back, and I bought a car wash in town here, in Boyne City. And when that first happened, I didn't know how to run a car wash or run a small business, so it was a learning experience. I've come to enjoy it. And since that, I've started going to some of the business after-hours, which I never really really intended prior. I just kind of took a liking to wanting to be more involved, so I think now more about, as a business owner, even though it's a small business, what can I do to be helpful to other business owners in the area.
Thank you, Chad. And Sally?
Well, aside from the obvious fact that I'm the one who's owing money, or the losing one to the board, I think the main reason is, I've lived in resort communities, and I know, as a resort community develops, and this one is well-studied, young, that there are the people that have lived here for generations. It's quite a change. It's a big change. And as I've talked to people, I've found that I would like to be somewhere in the middle of listening to every side of the issues that there are, because there obviously are sides. And I would love to be able to do something for the community, because I think this really is a very lively community. So, I would love to be able to serve in the way I could, and I would love to be on board.
So, this question will start with Ron. What civic projects have you helped facilitate, and/or what civic committees or offices have you served on?
I think the first thing I mentioned a few minutes ago was the being chairperson who raised the money to build a senior center. I've also served on the zoning board of appeals in Boyne City Housing Commission. And, well, I served as a youth arrest minister, also same choir at St. Matthew's. St. Matthew's has been a home church for 40 some years. I've had my, I don't know, several committees that have worked on the, you know, facility that we're in right now. Thank you, Doug. So anyways, I've had my fingers in the mix on just about everything for 18 years, so thank you.
That was a good one.
Now, Clint was all that aside.
Okay, let's keep going. Civic projects or civic offices, Dean?
Yeah, I think I listed a bunch of those when I had my opening statement, you know, the Farmers Market, helping to facilitate a bunch of stuff here in town, the non-motorized committee, and Charlevoix County Planning Commission, I was on for four years. I also, not here, but downstate, was a planning commission member, was on this side of the table for eight years in a township. The township, because higher population than Boyne City. And for that, I was chair, so I had a lot of experience on that side of the table down there. Also, more recently, well, actually, since it started, I've had a chance to be involved with the Leadership Charlevoix Program, and had the opportunity to now teach there in a professional role, but also serve as a mentor to a participant each year in that program, and interact with them. This is something that I really enjoyed the opportunity to do, in addition to the other things that I listed earlier.
Chad?
Probably the closest that I would come would be as a little principal, as administrator, in that role. You wear many hats. And so, I would have to work with, or have a chance to work with, the community, with parents. I would sit on committees in the school. I would sit on some outside of the school. And so, you know, whether you're working on the budgets, or you're just working on the planning, or strict geometric planning, that was always something I was a part of for many years. So, I guess the hope is that that translates into how can I do that from a more citizen standpoint.
Thank you, Sally.
Here in Boyne City, I haven't yet, that's what I wanted to, but I've had experience. I managed the prosecutor's office in Emmett for 25 years. And in the music realm, I played for a church in Rogers Springs for 30 years. But I like all the music that goes on, and I like to enjoy it especially. So, but I afford being able to do the things that I haven't done yet, but I'm excited about them.
Unfortunately, I have not served on any past boards or groups. However, through my experience with sports and teams, I feel that I have been some of that experience in working with all the kind of individuals pulling in as much information as I can, making sure everybody is very trained, making sure we're taking everyone's best interest higher, to help shape what we do moving forward. I've been a little bit busy as a plate. I'm doing school and working at the same time. So, similar to what Sally just said, it's something that I'd like to get started with, and Sally's is now taking an objective.
All right, this is a question from our audience, and it comes in two parts. One, do you have any idea as to how our fluoride in the city water program, which was voted out and passed by a citywide vote and advocated by local senators, was discontinued? And two, was this program discontinued without a vote of the people? Starting with Dean.
I agree it was discontinued.
Okay. Chad?
To my knowledge, it hasn't been discontinued.
Sally?
I, as I've been, as a head of this, I've heard both sides of the issue. I don't know what to say to it or not.
Okay. Andy?
Likewise, I unfortunately am not in no one's situation, so I think I'll have to get my stuff present.
And Ron?
In Boyne City, we still fluoridate the water, except for, believe, 20 parts per billion is the benchmark on it. And it was temporarily voted out by a commission vote, a 3-2 vote. And it was voted back in, I believe, with a commission vote. It was led very passionately throughout the community for probably a six-month period, and then it was reset. So, we still have fluoridation in our water. We have natural fluoride in the water to begin with. One of the wells, I think, has got 5 parts per billion, another one's got about 7, somewhere in that neighborhood. So it's a natural phenomenon to have it in the water.
This question will be directed at Chad first, as the first response. What do you think about the current mix of businesses in Boyne?
Think about the current mix?
That's what the question is.
Variety, I believe.
It just says, what do you think about the current mix of businesses in Boyne? I'm thinking it's a variety question, yes.
Well, I think it's good. You know, I said earlier, 20 years, that's a long time, seen a lot of change. And so, seen some businesses come and go, a lot of the smaller ones have come and gone. And, you know, whenever there's a new one that comes to town, people get excited, they can't wait for it to open. Every new business, of any kind, I mean, I remember when they closed down, was it Roast and Toast, the coffee shop on the corner? Well, then a new one came in, and reopened, and that's extended. So, the variety, I guess was the question, is a good thing, and builds interest, and people want to come visit our community because of it.
Yeah, I would go along with the fact that there is a good mix, and there's a lot of businesses coming in new. And especially restaurants. There's been an influx of restaurants, and I thought at first, how can we support that many? But the reality is that they're all different, and people enjoy them all. So, I like to see the growth that we have, and some of the old businesses, like the hardware stores, you know, where the two are. So, I think it's going in a good direction, and I'm hoping to keep it.
Andy?
Also, I think we have an excellent mix in our community. I think we have a lot of different variety. As some of you may know, I was working for the Boyne City Taproom and the Bob Laker for a little while, so I was part of the quick three-peat restaurant boom that came down. And it was exciting. I saw a lot of traffic, and prior to that, I had no experience there. I think we're doing pretty well on restaurants for now. I think we could look at some other avenues moving forward. I know Glenn Kat has extended a kind of inquisitive reach to see what would like to be brought in, in the space where the sportsmen was. Beyond that, I love the field that we have in our town, and I love walking down the street here, going to love again. And, you know, we have so much to offer, from the hardware stores to our mom-and-pop coffee shops, you know, a lot of great things, and hopefully, more to come along with that.
Ron?
Well, everybody's recognized that Boyne City is a restaurant destination, but there's a lot of businesses that are providing jobs in this community, that are family-supported jobs. We have over 1,000 people working in the industrial park here now. We have a broad range of business, from high-tech to low-tech manufacturing, and we also have long-term businesses, like Honeywell, right next door to us here. So there is a variety of business that runs deep, and it's, the job creation in this community is second to none in northern Michigan.
Well, I was gonna answer, if you have a hardware store, what else do you need? We have a great mix of businesses in the downtown area. I kind of agree with what Ron was going on a little bit, that we have had success in attracting small-scale manufacturing to town. And I think if we wanted to try to enhance something in our mix, being able to attract a greater variety, you know, of small-scale manufacturing, those types of businesses that add value, would be something that would not only support our existing mix of businesses, but also add something due to the family-supporting, and it helps draw people to our area.
All right, the next question, we're gonna start with Sally, and this is also from our audience. Boyne City has been heavily promoted to attract tourism. Some would say it's been over-promoted in that sector. Boyne year-round residents need year-round, full-time jobs, hopefully with benefits. Additionally, the community seems to be getting older and very seasonal. So, what would you hope to do to enhance Boyne City's attraction for singles, young professionals, couples who desire to grow a family, local youth returning from college, industry, and any other things that we might not have the correct balance of now? Why don't we go for two minutes on this one? It's in paragraph form, we get two minutes.
Well, one of the things that directly relates to that is the housing that is available here. And I think that, you know, there can be affordable housing for families that, from what I understand, what I've heard, is that the Boyne City Housing Commission, you know, they have something that's in the works, or maybe in the works, and if there are regulations, because you get funding for something like that, there are regulations that keep going, to low income, not to say low income is not needed, but with all of the influx of businesses, especially here, then we really need to keep that in mind, because it's gonna grow. We're not gonna go backwards. It doesn't happen. I've been in a resort that had this very, you know, this growth, and it's hard to keep up with, but it happens. It doesn't go back. When I said the secret's out, it is out. You know, people come here, it's a beautiful little town, it's just a beautiful town. And I think that, yeah. I should stop now. But, yeah, it's a tough thing to deal with when you're a resort town. It's changed. It used to be an industrial town, and the people that I've met that have been here for generations, you know, I really appreciate what they have to deal with, and it's something that I'm sure that they will. And we're different. We're different than we used to be, and we'll never be what we were.
Thank you. Andy?
This one hits home a little bit. Like I said, I recently moved here. I have goals of eventually raising a family here. Hoping to do that sooner than later. One thing that we definitely need is affordable housing, but when I say affordable housing, I don't mean, you know, you can't make more than this amount to live in this place. I think we need opportunities for people to purchase or rent, or be able to afford these houses. And that comes from what our income is for young adults. Currently, it's low. It's very low, and that's throughout all of northern Michigan. You know, somebody who makes $25,000 a year coming out of college, it's hard for them to be able to find something that they can call home and really make it their own. So, kind of agreeing with what you two have just mentioned, I think we need to find ways to attract more business that is able to generate the revenue, to pay the salaries that young adults need. Times have changed. People need more money to live. Cost of living in our area is likely going to continue to rise. So I think we need to continue to encourage businesses like Van Dan Boats, who just got approved to expand, and also in the industrial park, going to expand. They can now bring in more people, they can generate more revenue in the community. We can draw in young adults who are looking to build their lives here, like myself, and self-included. Part of the reason I'm sitting here right now is because I felt like I won the lottery when I was able to buy my house, because I somehow got my offer in time. And so, yeah, we need to attract more business, we need to find ways to pay more, and I think that comes from bringing more money into the community.
Thank you. Ron?
One of the, one of the things that's transitional, and it's getting better as time goes by, is the high-speed internet has helped. is the high-speed internet has helped, especially, you know, people who work from home and home-based businesses. And there's a lot of them in our community. And I'm just thinking like the Boyne City school system has an influx of people. One of the few schools in the area that's added, you know, to their student enrollment. And it's because of young families being able to make a living here. But a lot of it's in the high-tech area or jobs that are, you know, internet-based. We have a lot of people working from home. But the, having the high-speed internet here has made a big difference. But going back to what Andy had said and Sally had said, affordable housing is key to be able to live here. We do have some, a couple developers that look at properties in the south side of town that are, one of them is in reconditioning zone, so that could have multiple housing. I'm not sure if that property's gonna get out of the ground, but it could provide property somewhere near 100 homes in the so-called affordable category. What's affordable today in, you know, Oklahoma, owner-homes, down to 15 seconds. Anyways, affordable housing is at the forefront of one of our biggest needs. And it also made the top 10 list in Boyne City's citywide planning sessions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dean?
Well, first, I don't think we should apologize for really promoting tourism in our community, because that indeed does provide many jobs in our area. And, you know, some of them are seasonal, but a lot of them really support families. That's an important part of our economy. I think we should continue to emphasize in our economic development efforts. Other folks have said, Sally's up here, that the housing thing, I think, is a pretty important for us to address. I hope we're having some time later to talk about that. I suspect there's more people who want to come and live in our community, that are young families and seniors, if they only find a place that they can afford to buy and contribute to our community and create jobs, and find jobs. Talked earlier about, you know, adding to our mix opportunities for, you know, small-scale manufacturing, other things that create value in our community. The other thing I think is really important is that the quality of our community is one of the biggest assets that we have. And by having a place with these beautiful assets that we have, you know, the lake and the city hall and our parks and our wonderful downtown and all the stuff we have to do and all the activities that people can participate, is a draw of itself. And that environment is attractive to communities, to companies wanting to expand, to entrepreneurs who want to try their hand at building something good in our community as well. Putting all that stuff together, I think, is the key. Not wanting to be able to provide greater opportunity for young families or seniors and for people wanting to live in our community.
Thank you. Chad?
Well, first, I would suspect, it's a secret, folks come here as tourists. They come because we are, we're a hometown, it's one of the most beautiful cities in the area. Well, when they come, they're bringing the dollars into the community, they're speculating it. That's a good thing. Once the growth starts to happen, you start seeing things like continuing to build or grow your infrastructure, this building here. This building here will draw folks here. I suspect it's already happening. I suspect in those meeting rooms, we're already starting to populate with folks coming here, you know, renting it or leasing it, the whole business meetings. They're not having to go to Boyne, come on, they can come here. See, that business is gonna start coming here, more and more attraction there. When you start bringing in small businesses, however, you're gonna need some human resources. That's gonna be one of the challenges for any business. It's hard to find employees. Well, if you're gonna have the small businesses, you're gonna need the human resources. Those folks are a good place to live. So, I know it was touched on earlier, as far as affordable housing. That's gonna become more and more important as the business starts to grow, as the business community grows. So, I think it's important that we focus on keeping the tourism, continuing to grow and build the infrastructure, and look forward to having other small businesses come. And to do that, we're gonna need some of the great resources, we need folks to come here.
So, we are gonna continue, sort of in this vein, some of the housing issues have come up, and I have all sorts of questions here. I'm gonna try and combine a few of them together, because it's all sort of on the same vein. And I think we'll give maybe two and a half minutes. I feel like housing is a pretty big issue. And since there are so many questions about it, I want to make sure that you really have time to delve into this. So, I'm gonna just read a few of the things. There are questions on both sides of the housing concerns. So, one person says, "We have heard there's a need for seasonal housing to help the local businesses at city meetings." They have heard that. "Also, some feel we need low-income housing, even though the income limits may not perfectly align with year-round professional employment. I don't hear surrounding cities being as vocal about the need. What is your understanding of the situation?" So, that's one piece of it. "Housing issues have been on the forefront of many discussions. What is your plan for ensuring the interest of your constituents and keeping the care curve going to ensure future growth in tourism? To how you, or what will you do to address the growing concern and issue of affordable housing?" All the way to the other side, "Do you have ideas on innovative ways that our community can provide public-private partnerships for workforce housing?" So, there's a lot of pieces in that. If you can kind of, we're gonna start with Andy and maybe unpack your... I'm gonna summarize. So, if you can, I just want to make sure that everyone's voice was heard. If you can maybe summarize, A, your understanding of the housing issues that Boyne City is facing, how that compares to the region, if you have that information, and what you plan to do as, if you are elected, to address the housing concerns in the area on all sides.
All right. Yes, I am very aware of this challenge that faces our community. When the housing meetings first started up, I was attending on behalf of Boyne City Tap Room. A lot of restaurant groups and restaurants were there, all because we are so affected by seasonal influx of tourists, of people. In the summertime, it's roll the streets. We love it as a community, tourists love it just as much. That drives our businesses to go crazy on Friday nights, and then they taper off. And then it gets crazy again on Friday night and it tapers off. That will lead to a need for seasonal housing. However, I think for the development that we really need to do as a community, we need more housing that people can afford year-round. We need people who are making salaries or hourly wages throughout the course of the year to be able to afford where they want to live. And they need to be able to afford our community. Next part.
So, you're aware of the situation and what you plan to do about it?
Ah, my thoughts. So, okay. You know, I am aware of the proposed establishment development that has been discussed on Jefferson, off of Jefferson. I think the idea is excellent. I'm not 100% sold on the air. And that has to come from a really, really thorough vetting of that location. And if it's not 100% right, we should not move forward with it. If it is determined that we can solve all of the problems that we need to solve, yes, move forward. So, where I stand specifically on that location is, let's make sure the location is exactly what needs to be used. Oh, wow, that would pass. In addition, I have another idea, and that is that our Boyne City School District has many unique awesome programs. One of them is the Learning Trades Program. We have our students, as many of you may know, learning how to build a house. And I don't know exactly what price point these houses are, but what if we could have them learn how to build a house that's affordable for somebody? Now, you're teaching new skills for the school district and you're providing for this growth that we want to see. I think if we can continue to educate students in the trades, will help build our community organically, as I understand the desire. So, I'm sure I could continue talking about this, but I'm sure we have a lot more great ideas to hear.
Thank you. Ron, your talk's really healthy.
Well, we like to say yes to developers. That's one of the first things we do. So, anyways, the situation on Jefferson Street in many areas in the town, where there's bigger areas, which are very few as far as open acreage and open area. One of the problems we have in the community, particularly Jefferson Street, generally is the high-water table. And whether you build 20 apartments or 15 or 20 duplexes, something that's in the affordable area, the, if you build a, you build out a project, whether you start with 20 homes or 50 homes or whatever it is, you have to put in enough infrastructure to carry the water so it's not going in the neighbor's yard. And it's quite an expensive involved to put a complex together. So, the, our current team that works on this, planning commission and city commission, give the developers a lot of latitude to zonie. And they hope that they can take the bomb and run with it. So, it's a big investment for somebody and to keep it in the affordable range. Whether you build 10 or 20 homes, if it's built outs for 100, you gotta put all the infrastructure in first to carry the water away from the land. The senior situation in Boyne City also needs some affordable housing that's subsidized. They probably, right at the present time, need for approximately 40 to 50 units per senior. We have, I think there's, last check, there was like 46 people on the waiting list that have been approved for subsidized housing. The county, not the county here, but the city of Boyne City, I believe that somewhere it's around 28% of the population is over 65 years old. So, it's, we have that issue. Right next to the senior center, and south of the senior center is a piece of land there that's pretty developed. It would take some more engineering as far as moving the water off the site. So, it's a great expense involved, whether you build 10 or you build 20 or 50.
Thank you, Ron. It was a big question, so I'm just gonna recap. We are talking about the affordable housing issue. What is your awareness or understanding of the situation, both locally and regionally? And what will you do to address the growing concern slash issue of affordable housing in Boyne? Including, if you have any ideas on innovative ways that our community can provide public-private partnerships? So, just to kind of recap the question.
Great. Well, that issue is really super important. As I said, that, this past Monday, I went to the Northwest Regional Housing Summit down in Traverse City. So, this is really fresh in my mind, a whole, whole idea. One that I learned about tremendous enough, the one thing is we're not alone. This is an issue that's being faced all around, because it's not at Boyne City, it's a regional issue. Very much the same kind of term that we talk about it here in Boyne City. There's two parts of it. I think one of them is hardly housing affordability. Of course, affordability depends on how much you make, right? So, you talked there about affordability as being, you know, roughly about 30% of your household income could go to housing that would be affordable. So, for somebody to take $3,000, it's different from $60,000. So, affordability is the thing. Also, housing choices, we saw fascinating discussion that folks nowadays, us non-baby boomers, us baby boomers wanted a single-family home with land around it. And other generations, the generation now coming along, are looking for something different. Something often more dense, more compact, a different type of housing than us baby boomers thought about as the ideal place to live. And that was really eye-opening. So, here in Boyne City, there's a few things that I think about to do. First of all, I think we ought to look very carefully at our master plan and our zoning ordinance to see, to make sure that we're matching what we hope to achieve in housing with what our laws say you have to build. I suspect that we are not quite as innovative as we could be in looking at the, especially things like housing choice. They have different types of buildings and structures, you know, multi-family, different arrangements, different places, opportunities for control. And I also think we may inadvertently have, we might want to look at our processes to make sure that we're not creating barriers to development. We also heard that time is important. Time is money for developer, especially in these days of high labor costs and high materials costs. That's critical. I also think we ought to stay active in those regional efforts, that a lot of ideas are being generated around, that innovations are happening in other parts of the region, other states, and we need to respond to those. Third, I think we need to keep educating ourselves, and I think we need to keep the conversation going in Boyne City. This is important, it's controversial, it's great to talk about until there's a development right near you that might impact what life is like where you live. And that creates, and we need to talk about that again and again, to be sure that we're all going in a similar direction.
Thank you. Chad, your understanding of the situation and what are your thoughts about what you plan to do?
Well, I have heard it's a big topic, very important topic. And I suspect this board has done an awful lot of research, a lot of work at this point, collected as much data as they can, reached out to the community, asking the question, who's in favor, who isn't, and if you're not, why not? I have to be honest, I haven't heard a lot of that result. So, I don't have a lot of the intimate knowledge. But I can say this, that I do feel personally that it is important to have affordable housing. And you're probably gonna need lots of it. It's not gonna be just one or two homes. It's gonna be a subdivision with 10, 20, 30, 50. And so, Andy touched on a little bit, the location, where you place it, where is it going to be? Who's it gonna be next to? The people that are, you know, have been living somewhere for 20 years, they may not want it. This subdivision with all the increased traffic, let alone water flow issues, they may not want all that right next door. So, the location of where you purchase land or where land is purchased, whether you use a developer from outside or you use local, I think that's gonna be key. It's gonna be important. So, I guess my role would just be to learn more about it, get out in the community, start talking to folk. And once areas are identified as likely plots of land, figured where we can start, who's it gonna impact, who's it gonna affect? You know, be sensitive to what their concerns are, because that's important too. So, that's my answer.
Thank you, Chad. Sally, to recap, talking about housing issues and what is your awareness of the situation and what you plan to do with it?
For sure, that's probably one of the top things on the list when I talk to citizens when I go back on boards there, you know, one of the major issues is affordable housing. And it's from both sides of that issue. It's from the people that have lived here for generations. And the young, new people that are coming here because the jobs are here. So, it's, I would say it's probably one of the most top-end issues that I've run into in my, in my, getting to know the people. And I wonder, I'm glad to hear that the school is, they're doing a, they're building a house. They've been doing that in the Costco for several years. And I think it's a great thing. It's great for the kids, they do a lot of good things. Plus, it's helpful to someone who does need a house and can't afford it necessarily. But the other thing I've heard in this question is, if there's a way to develop, there would be water and sewer, you know? And I, is that, is that part of the cost to the citizenry? Or is it something that's built into the, you know, to the workers doing that? So, and the other question is seasonal work. You know, there are a lot of people here and there, obviously there's many more people that work here in the summer. And if you build affordable housing, but it's, I have to think of it as year-round, what about the summer people? You know, what, what ways are there to possibly deal with the fact that those people are here in the summer home? And where do they live? And that, I don't, I've heard a lot of questions like that. So, is that my confusion?
Sure.
Yeah. But year-round housing is for sure something.
So our next question is going to be another consolidation question from our audience. So bear with me, please. Some citizens have felt commissioners are not leading for the constituents who elected them. There seems to be some confusion about the organizational structure. If elected, how do you plan to change the current dynamics of Boyne City's leadership? And how will you be sure that you're fulfilling the will of the citizens that have elected you? And we'll start with Ron.
Thank you, Chris. The job as commissioner is similar to a board of a corporation. It is a business, it's a viable business, and its main job is service. But the job of a commissioner really is to create policy and allocate resources. Now, that may sound oversimplified, but the program we have going here in Boyne City, it's always been, I shouldn't say always been, but for the last fifteen, eighteen years, since we started doing citywide planning sessions, it isn't five people deciding what the city needs or what the people need. It's the citizens making that decision with the citywide planning sessions and goal-setting and top-ten lists. And everything that's been done in the last several years has been what the people have asked us to do. So we've had our ears open, our eyes open, and looking for opportunity to fulfill the top-ten list. And many of these projects have been completed. I know I mentioned the senior center before, but there's also removing the waste treatment plant from the waterfront. There's, I just think of a lot of the accomplishments that have taken place as far as improvement. Twenty years ago, we had very few sidewalks. One of my wishes of the people is to have, make this a walkable community. And we're still providing new sidewalks every year, fixing old ones. Right now, you can walk from almost, in the end of Boyne City, one way or the other, towards downtown, from one side of town to the other with sidewalks, which previously we didn't have. So, we have a board, we're being part of the commission, that's had their eyes open and their ears open to what the people want. That has been our guiding, guiding premise, has been what the people have asked us to do. So, again, it's, our job is to create policy and allocate resource and have our ears and eyes open to what the people want.
Thank you. Dean?
Since I decided to join, to try to run, to run for this office, I've been going to all of the city commission meetings, just about all of them. And they're at the opportunity to observe what's going on. And, you know, sitting out there in the, in the audience looking at the commission, you know, things, things look really good, you know, like the way that the meetings are conducted, what processes work, all seems to be like this is really the model for the communities to use. I think one of the challenges is sometimes there's a disconnect between how the city commission feels as doing the city staff and then how residents, who might not be as involved, feel that they're doing. And I think one important way to address that is for us to, even to a greater extent than we're currently doing, to engage our residents. Just that I help facilitate those. Every other year, planning sessions that run, to know, okay, you know, those are good. But even after the last one, I sort of noticed that the attendance of zones has been, you know, not quite as high as they were in previous years. Tends to be the same people, they give great, great advice. But I think we need to mix it up, look at a different formula to be able to make it fun, interesting, engaging, and worthwhile for a lot more citizens to interact with the city commission, to help in setting the direction of the community and feel like their voice is now only being heard, but they see their ideas and their concerns being reflected in what the commission chooses to address. I think we can do that, there's all sorts of ways. I think we've done an outstanding job, really, in the past of getting citizens involved, more so in many other communities. You have down to those yellow signs we put out, you know, that say, here's a, looks ominous to hearing in your area or something like that. But it gets people to call up and want to know what's going on. So those are the things I think that we ought to emphasize as a way of getting at that issue of that connection between the folks who live and work in our community and the workings of government and the policies that the, that the city commission implements.
Thank you. And Chad?
Dean touched on that the meetings that are held here aren't always highly attended. Sometimes it might be two or three people. And even though, pardon me, board's protocol is to, you know, continually ask, is there any, any questions from the audience or any questions from the community? One, there's not a lot of people in attendance. And two, even if there were, some folks can be a little intimidated to come in here and sit and ask a question, you know, during the board meeting times. I don't know if this is a real simplistic way of seeing it, but Chuck Bakker is downtown every single morning, he's at the gas station. Almost everybody knows that. And I remember this is maybe a year ago, I asked him, I said, oh, you're down there every morning, eight o'clock, he's having coffee, talking to a couple guys, and then he leaves, eight o'clock or nine. And he said it's important for him, because in his role, people are a little intimidated to come into his office or to come up to him when he's in his official capacity. But when he's down there, it's a little less formal and he can keep his thumb on the pulse or he can hear what the concerns are to the people in the community. And he gleaned a lot of information just by doing that one thing. And so I don't know if that's a possibility, but sometimes if you're talking about getting information out, you're also talking about trying to get information back. And so simplistic way might be some less formal means of allowing people to ask questions or remember. So, you know, if, for example, I was fortunate enough to be asked to serve on the board, I could take on that as a, as a, as a goal. I could be somewhere, I don't know that I would, a bridge on his, terrible. But something along those lines, you know, things to call, what they call the coffee shop or conversations, you know, if you need and people just can come in. And a lot of people feel comfortable in doing that. Maybe as a board member, one person or we can turn and try to set up situations where it's a little less formal.
Thank you. Sally?
I would agree with that way. I plan on spending a lot of time, if I, if I were to be fortunate enough to be elected, I would still be going out to talk to people. And if it can be in a setting where they don't leave someplace, that's good. If not, still, you need to hear what, what the people are concerned about. And if they're not gonna come to the meetings and they don't, you know, this is the biggest move that I have seen in coming to the meetings in the last, since I've been running. So it's encouraging to see this and I would like to see it continue. You know, your vote is your voice, you know, in a lot of, that's one way to look at it. Your vote is your voice and, and also as commissioners, you know, you go out and talk to the people and you find out what the problems are. And I'm sure you find out a lot of people that write or voice their opinion on something that happened. But, yeah, it's, it's, the connection to the people is so important, especially when you have, you know, the people that have summer homes here, but they don't vote here. And then the people that vote here that worry about, it's like I said before, about the resort community and it's growing. So, but I think, you know, if you can, I don't know how you get it out there, that you're having a board commissioners meeting and if you have the issues that people might be concerned about, maybe they'll be more apt to come to get, to get the word out there, even if it was more than just a newsletter or something, you know, a way of getting people to understand what's happening.
Thank you. Andy?
All right. So one of the things that I've learned through the time that I've been spending outside of work, getting my MBA, is that we have to really look at everything critically. We have to gather as much information as we possibly can in order to really understand something. One of those things would be our organizational chart. We are a business, our community is a business, just like you mentioned, and this role is kind of like guiding business. In order to really move forward, we have to know what is there. And I'm not saying that I have a, an understanding or a grasp on our processes and our, our chart. So should I be elected? That's one of the first things that I'm going to do is, is really dive in deep and gain that understanding so that I can make what I feel are the right decisions moving forward. Should a process not be functioning well or working correct? It needs to be adjusted, it needs to be changed, and it needs to be thoroughly decided what the optimal idea is moving forward actually. And we need to have one main form, that is to serve our constituents. That is, that's what this role is for. In order to serve the constituents, serve each other, we need to find ways to open up lines of communication, just like everybody has mentioned. And I really like the ideas that I'm hearing about making it a less formal setting to allow people to get that information to us. We also have technology. We have other ways that, you know, somebody can share, you know. When I was working sixty hours a week, it was pretty tough to get to those meetings. But if we have another way or another avenue to share those thoughts, those ideas, it's only an help. Now that would bring on a little more responsibility to us in that we need to be sure we're seeing all of that information as it comes in. Let's keep moving with the times and let's put technology aside and put it away. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. We're gonna go back to one-minute responses. Doug, official timer. And everyone. It's real, like, comfortable. Okay. But these are kind of less controversial issues, I think, and you can get through all four remaining questions and then still have time for the two-minute closing phase for everybody. So this question says, "The U.S. Congress appears heading towards an austerity budget. What local programs are at risk?" And in parentheses, they've written healthcare, great lakes, low income housing, et cetera. What steps can Boyne take? And where did we start last time wrong? So we're starting with Dean.
Wonderful. Well, you know, it's a little bit speculative. It certainly, I think it's certainly true that we can expect less in the way of funds being made available to us locally from the federal government. That's sort of, and leaves us more austere times, I'd probably like to prove. It's hard to say, you know, what exact funds would be cut, you know, maybe there'd be even more money in something like transportation, but it's a tough one. I think that here in our community, we can take control of our own destiny by addressing the things, controlling the things we control. We control our budget that we have. We could be entrepreneurial in the way that we seek outside grant money, it's not dependent necessarily on federal funds. And those are the things I think we could worry about. I don't think that there should, I guess if we were trying to get obsessed about what happens in Washington, that probably will set us back and not allow us to move toward the future. So if we concentrate on our local sources of funds that we know about, opportunities for grants, and be really entrepreneurial, we can handle potential reductions about federal.
Thank you, Dean. Chad?
What was the question?
The question is, "The U.S. Congress appears heading towards an austerity budget. What local programs are at risk and what steps can Boyne take?"
What local programs are at risk? Well, one thing I do know is that when you have programs that are primarily grant-funded and folks that work for those programs that are, their positions are grant-funded, sometimes those grants aren't always there as long as you'd like. And so, in my experience, when there's budget cuts or people are looking at, sometimes it's shifting the money from one thing to the, to the next. So as far as what's coming from the federal government, I gotta say, I don't know right now. But if I had to speculate, I would say that there's gonna be reductions in monies that go to the states and so reductions in monies that come through grants to the local communities. And any monies that were there once before through grants will probably be reshuffled and used to, you know, somewhere else. So we're gonna have to be diligent, stay on top of trying to find new grant monies. And, you know, I'm not sure what's gonna be happening. Something will, I suspect.
Thank you. Sally?
I think there's a lot of volatility in the federal government right now. And if anybody suspects what they cut or what they need or, or if it's not cut, I want to be there. So I think the more that we as a community can find ways to deal with that. I mean, for sure, you can research grants all over the place and they're out there. They're out there, some, some that are never cut. So, I don't know, maybe that's something that, I don't know what the way it works now within the city. But I think there's been a lot of grant searching and some good developments coming. So I hope that we can continue with it despite what might be happening in the federal environment.
Thank you. Andy?
Again, this is a topic I'm not that well acquainted, but it is something that I would seek out information towards. As others have mentioned, we're not sure exactly what would be cut. Just have to take it as it comes, but the way to do that is to prepare for it. So look at where these cuts could hit and figure out how we would reallocate funds from other places to accommodate those losses.
Thank you. Ron?
I think the biggest risk probably would be for our children. You know, there's so many subsidized programs for, for additional teaching, additional resources and things, you know, to our school system, in particular the food programs. And it could affect savers also, that the, the different food banks that are supportive of the mental system, which is regional and helps out with the food companies and stuff like that. They're depending upon a lot of federal support. The USDA is federal, but I haven't heard that mentioned. So it's, we're an educated guest to know what's gonna come down the pipe from Washington. So, but we've gotta handle our ears open and our eyes open to what's happening. Austerity has been a guiding light for this city itself in the last fifteen years. So it's 2006, 2007, or up to about two years ago, things were, a lot of drastic cuts had been made.
Okay. Thank you.
Next question, we're going to start with Chad. Do you feel our tax rate is appropriate for the city's current needs? Why or why not?
The tax rate is appropriate. The money that's generated through taxation is necessary. If you were to offer a tax cut, then that money has to come from somewhere else. The money that's generated through taxes goes to good use. money that's generated in taxes goes to good use, goes and does things that are important for the community. So while I don't think anybody likes to pay more taxes, or even as much as they're paying now. So the question is, is the tax, is taxation fair right now? I suspect it is. I suspect it's as fair as it can be. We need the revenue that's generated from running. It does good work, it does good things. So the idea of reducing tax collection may not be the most beneficial thing to it.
Thank you. Sally?
I'm hesitant to say it's fair now, but I think as we grow as the resort community, there are more tax revenues that come in from the businesses, from the people that own homes here that aren't necessarily voters, but still, there's taxable properties. So I don't think that, I don't think the city is ever gonna say, "We want more," if they don't need it. But then the question is, what the actual need is. So I think, I mean, where I, where I live, my taxes are reasonable to me now. But the concerns of some of the citizens are, as we grow, will the taxes increase just because our values will increase? So I don't really have the answer to the question, but it's certainly one that needs to be studied by me, right?
Thank you. Andy?
Yes, I feel that I pay their taxes. I don't feel that any, that I'm currently paying for is beyond reason. Similar to what Chad said, it's a necessary expense. And I think, you know, in this role moving forward, whatever proposed increases or decreases is on the table, it needs to be thoroughly analyzed. And we need to have the best possible opinion on it that we can. We need facts. We need to look at what it's gonna do, where those dollars are gonna go. And personally, like I said, having lived many other places, I don't like that we don't have the nice roads. Drive down South Pacific and see what it's like. So.
Thank you. Ron?
I think at the present time, fifteen and a half mils is appropriate. When I first came on the board, we were, I believe it was like nineteen mils, this was back in 1998, 1999. And we've been able to reduce the tax from millions over these years by partnerships with the townships of Hernandez. Back when I first came on board as the commission, our business plan was somewhat broken. We were giving away our services with no remuneration. And we've now had fire agreements with six townships for fire, ambulance, some, we also had some for community help, stuff like this. And through collaboration and through partnerships with the surrounding communities, everybody's paying a fair share. Now we're in our fire station, our ambulance department, and it's equally apportioned, you know, based on the population. And we have different ways of doing it. Some of it is SEV, and some of it's by modern people in the households. So it's been a, in some austerity moves, I mean, being able to reduce the taxation that we have over the last several years, it's through partnerships. And if you're thinking, you have ideas.
Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, so I indicated about fifteen and a half mils per residency, not homestead of about forty. So the tax rate, of course, is more than just what we levy within the city. But those funds, as we're unindicated, that rate is low compared to what had been in the past. So we're historically low. And that's a big thing for us. But looking at the other side of the equation, are we generating enough money in taxes to meet our basic needs? And as I look at the budget, it looks like it's been quite well responsibly managed, so that the city would've been able to meet our needs. And at the end of the year, being add, being able to add it into our fund balance, which is like our savings account. And that's important, because it gives us extra money to be able to leverage, to do other things. For instance, we're able to use some from that savings account, that fund balance, to purchase the open space. And if in the future we're able to keep to that rate, keep to that approach, we're able to meet our needs responsibly, and be able to have some funds that we can use to leverage other opportunities.
Thank you. Great. Segue into the next question, too. Traverse City and other communities with extensive waterfront recognize their greatest asset and attraction is the waterfront. Most have protected lakefront for public use. Traverse has aggressively purchased land going to Acme. What is your view on keeping remaining waterfront public? And we start with Sal right there.
Yes.
That's an easy one. I think, I think it's fantastic, and I understand that it's gonna happen, the open space, the remaining open space, that's 600 feet of lakefronting. This county building, this city building, and the buildings from here down to the chamber allow us to have that public access to the lake, you know, the ball field. There's just, this is quite a rundown here of something that's not gonna ever be, it's never gonna go to develop housing or anything. It's gonna stay for all the citizens to enjoy it, which I, which I genuinely think is wonderful.
Thank you. Andy?
Can you say that one more time?
Yep. What is your view on keeping your remaining waterfront public?
I will say it's a humble place to keep it public. It's part of the reason I find myself here now, and one of the biggest reasons. Our water is incredible. Our air is good and aspirating. It's going to draw more people here. And some people may say, "Oh, we'll put a hotel over there. We'll give you X million amount of dollars." No, it's gotta stay public.
Thank you. Ron?
Well, we have other waterfront property besides what we're seeing here on Lake Charlotte. We have the Point River. It's been an ongoing goal to acquire waterfront property, particularly the river. And we're now working on the open space. And the open space, it was about five or six years, we boarded up and developed further. Got beat up by the downturn in the economy in 2006 and '07, had 110 submarines approved, 30 condo hotels, but it never came to pass. It created an opportunity for the city to purchase its property. And so we hope to be able to close a closing on it. We've worked hard on the negotiations over the years, and we'll continue to do so, acquire riverfront and waterfront property as it becomes available. So definitely needs to be, stay public.
Dean?
Andy, I take this as a good question, but there's a debate about what was the waterfront. Nobody would suggest daring to want to somehow reduce that. I think we've made good steps in the last, in recent years, to be able to expand that, the open space. And I think the activity, this building was built to push it up to the street, to open up the interior, remove, we had opportunities to improve the quality of that waterfront as well. The other thing, though, I think is part of that, is not only keeping the shoreline, but also keeping the water clean. And there, we've got to be responsible stewards of that shoreline area, try to manage our erosion to improve for that. The other thing I think that we can do as a city is to continue to examine and upgrade our stormwater systems. This summer, for instance, it was pretty rainy, and I have a feeling that there's a fair amount of sediment that ran into the lake. As we look to improve that, we can not only have our municipal shoreline, but keep our water clean and clear in and around the city.
Thank you. Chad?
Dean touched on it, but I think there's not really much but debate whether or not we should preserve, protect the waterfront. It is what wanted chief attractions for Point City, the water, for the tourists, up for the locals. So keeping it public land would be the direction that I think we ought to go. In addition to that, just to maybe expand other questions a little bit, in addition to the waterfront, all public lands. There's other places around, Mr. Brash touched on, it's not just the lake, but the river. We got avalanche. There are other attractions that local folks use and wanna keep. So whenever we can, whenever we have opportunities, we should up to expand those public lands and preserve them.
Thank you. So we have actually been able to get through all of the questions. Some work is solidated into, you know, into groups of questions. So at this time, we're gonna start with the closing statements. And I would ask the commission candidates to think about, you know, your final comments to the group here today, and what you would like people to remember about you as they're standing in their voting booth on November 7th. So we'll start in the reverse order, as we did in two minutes. Yes, thank you. We'll start in the reverse order. So it's back to you, Chad, for two-minute closing statement.
I don't know that I'll take all two minutes, but, you know, I'm very much looking forward to it. If the folks in the community decide on the subpoena to select me to be on the board, I think that would be an accomplishment for me. I'd be very proud, proud of Boeing's doing. I believe that I would serve and serve well. I'm looking forward to it. If it doesn't happen, I'm still gonna look towards how can I become more involved. I mean, that's something that I want to do instead of the whole thing is taken. So I'm gonna do that regardless. And so this would just be one way that I can contribute. So I ask for your vote. And if it goes my way, then I thank you, and I'll work hard to do what I can to support you.
Thank you, Chad. Dean?
Well, Ashley Crisp, thanks for putting this together. This was fun to make. Thanks to everyone who came and patiently heard us out. So a couple of years ago, I was over at Boeing, I was skiing there, going on the chairlift with a couple of young adults from downstate. And they're having a really good time, I think. Oh, hey dude, where you from? And I said, I don't think anybody's ever called me dude before. I said, you know, I'm from Point City. They're like, oh dude. And they said, it's so cool. And Point City, we love Point City. And they listed all the things they love about Point City. Now, you know, the list was a little bit complicated. Everything they said was correct. And so we, you know, we were on the footy, we were doing one another. It was kind of fun, you know. So they got off the chairlift at the top, and they go bombing down the hill. And I get horses, because my long jump turned first down the hill. I was kind of, you know, chuckling about this conversation. And then I got to thinking, you said, you know, you know, I am a cool dude. I get to live in Point City. And it's true, this is a special place. This is a special place. And I think we're doing great things, I really do. But I think we need to keep pushing. We can never let up. You know, I think we always need to be looking for new ways to deal with complicated issues like housing that we were talking about before. I think we always need to be looking for new opportunities to bring more residents into the discussion, and to be active in Point City. I think we need to continue to look for more ways to protect the environment, the natural resources that are the main reason why a lot of us live here. And I think we need to continue to tell the Point City story, which is a great one. I think that my experience, my knowledge, and my enthusiasm benefit the commission. And, you know, quite honestly, I would be honored to be able to have the opportunity to serve all of you, and to be an underoof of Point City Commission.
Thank you, Dean.
Dudes.
Ron?
I love Point City. Been here for four to five years now. And we were welcomed with open arms when we opened our business here, the Sears catalog franchise. We also had a store over in Gilbert at the same time that the wife and I operated. And had the opportunity to move here. And it just, everybody made us feel like home, like it just, and I feel honored that I've been able to serve the community since I've retired. It's been 18 years, 19 years I've been retired. And I'll continue to be an advocate for seniors, whether I'm elected or not elected. And I feel that I do offer a business perspective to operating a city like it is. And as Dean has said, we don't wanna falter at the pinnacle of our success. We wanna keep pushing. There's no timeouts. There's things coming down the pipe. It seems like every meeting we have, there's new opportunities presented to us. We have to vet them out, to be honest. Is this what the people want? And again, as I've said before, what we've done is not what five people decided that the city needed, it's what the people have asked us to do. So I wanna keep my ears and eyes open. And I thank you much for the letting us serve you these last 18 years. And I'd be honored to do so for another four-year term, if you're elected. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Andy?
First off, thank you too for setting us up and enabling our opportunity to do folks and share our thoughts. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Just some basic ideas about why I'm doing this. You know, I think through thorough dedication to the community, we can facilitate sustainable growth by making educated decisions, by gathering the data, by speaking with our constituents, with our people. Then we can decide what needs to be done moving forward. You know, I haven't been here very long, but I already have great pride in this community. You know, being able to tell people wherever I go, "Yeah, I'm from Northern Michigan, and I'm living there, and you should come to, you should see how cool this place is." Only good people. But, no, I, you know, I think our commission has done an excellent job. And I would be honored to have the opportunity to join that group and help guide this community towards growth. And thank you all for coming here, and I appreciate it.
And Andy, and Sally?
And thank you too, again, for giving us an opportunity to meet some of our constituents. Some I know already, but there's a lot of people that I've still haven't yet meet. And I look forward to the possibility of being able to serve this town, which this town has a very warm feeling to it. And I'd love that I'm here in my other efforts, because it's a beautiful place to be. The people are very enthusiastic. And like you were talking about, the stolen streets. And my daughter's there, and the town is called Sowol. It's out of Point. You know, I guess it's a take on Sowol or whatever. But there's just a lot of innovation, creative ideas. And I would love to see that continue, and I would love the opportunity to be able to serve.
Thank you. I want to round with applause.